Good evening. Welcome to the November 14th meeting of the Aiken City Council. At this time, we'd like to please rise for our invocation, which is going to be led by Stuart Beedenbaugh, followed by the pledge, which will be led by Troop 421. So, Mike Senior?
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Gracious God, as we gather tonight, we thank you for living in a country where we can have peaceful transfer of power. We also thank you for the service of our veterans, both past and present. As we enter this Thanksgiving season, we have so much to be thankful for, an abundance of blessings. We ask your continued blessings on our citizens, our council, and our staff, and families, and our country tonight and through the holiday season. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Stuart Beedenbaugh. We appreciate it. I'm going to ask our guests from Troop 421 to come forward at this time. We have a good showing today. Would each one of you mind going, saying your name, please? Cameron, you can start.
Mike Steen.
Yeah.
My name is Cameron Meyer. I'm a Life Scout.
Very good.
My name is Carlos Meyer. I'm a Life Scout.
Welcome.
My name is Chaz Graham. I'm a Life Scout.
My name is Joshua Burge. I'm also a Life Scout.
Welcome, Joshua.
My name is Caleb Morrison. I'm a First Class Scout.
My name is Michael Bussler, and I'm a Star Scout.
Thank you. And I think everybody's going to join in, but Cameron, you're going to start us in our pledge tonight, correct?
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Gentlemen, thank you so much for your help.
What's after life? Is life just below Eagle? We're getting close to the Eagle, Scott. It's good for you guys. That's wonderful.
Thanks so much for leading us in our pledge tonight. Next, there's our guidelines. It's very informally. Any item that we have, we open to discussion from our audience. We ask that the topic, that the speaker please stay on the topic. We limit the conversation to five minutes, so everyone will have an opportunity, and all comments will please be directed to the chair, and I will raise your hand, and I'll certainly recognize you during that time. And with that, I'll recognize our Mayor Pro Tim. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I have none. Are there any changes or additions from the council? Hearing none, I move that we approve the agenda as issued.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And that was distributed before the meeting to council members. Is there a motion to consider the minutes as presented?
I still move.
Have a motion, a second? Mr. Abner, seconds? Any discussion? Thank you. None? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to old business. Number one, this is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. I'll look at staff for anyone who might be moved forward for this consideration.
Mr. Mayor, the city council has 29 pending appointments to fill vacancies on different city boards, commissions, and committees. One appointment is presented for council's consideration and vote at the meeting tonight. Councilwoman Diggs has recommended the appointment of Jack Benjamin to the Arts Commission to represent the education category and to fill the position of Laverne Justice, who has resigned. If appointed, Mr. Benjamin's term would expire April 11th, 2018. For council consideration is the appointment of Jack Benjamin to the Arts Commission to represent the education category.
Thank you, Mr. Clem. We have one appointment to vote on tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm with you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, a second?
Booker?
All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Are there any names to be moved forward for consideration at our next meeting?
I'd like to reappoint Norman Dunigan to the energy and environmental committee.
Norman Dunigan will be considered on our next agenda. Any other?
Just a thought, could we remove the Parks Commission from this list? It's a non-functioning commission. We've asked it to be re-energized, but it's been that way for months, so it's not fair to say we have these openings. We can't appoint anybody to it because it's not working. Okay. Thank you.
I'll ask our city attorney.
There's no reason why you couldn't do that.
Sure.
Well, I have a request, too. The Building Code Appeals Committee. That's one that...
You're required to have that committee. You are required to have that committee.
Ain't that what me?
There's an appeal, would they make?
So, they just, I mean, my point, he resigned a long time ago, and I put him on something else, but...
State law requires you to have...
That was one of the reasons.
State law requires you to have that.
So, it's difficult to find people who serve him on that one. I'm sure someone's going to take over my appointment. This I ask.
Thank you for the comments. Moving down to old business, number two, this is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving Mobility LLC as a telecommunications service provider in the city of Aiken. And by title, it's an ordinance approving Mobility LLC as a telecommunications service provider within the city limits of Aiken. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this. It would move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Have a second? Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, we have been contacted by representatives of Mobility LLC requesting that they be granted the right to install new utility infrastructure in the city of Aiken. Mobility plans to construct the utility infrastructure within the next three months. Mobility is a public utility company regulated by the South Carolina Public Service Commission to provide telephone-related services such as facilities-based competitive local exchange and interexchange services. State law provides that for utilities to construct and operate lines and facilities in a public street or on public property, they must obtain the consent of the governing body of the municipality. State law also requires that municipal governments act by ordinance in granting, renewing, or extending a franchise. The maximum franchise fee allowed by South Carolina law to the applicant providing telecommunications services is $1,000 a year. Proposed franchise agreement has been reviewed by Mr. George Gritten, Engineering and Utilities Manager, and Gary Smith, our city attorney, and they have recommended that the franchise be granted. City council approved this ordinance on first reading at the October 24th, 2016 meeting. For city council consideration is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance granting a franchise agreement for telecommunications services within the Aiken city limits to Mobility LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Clem. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? All those in favor on second reading? Raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to number three under old business, this is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the code regarding recycling services and change the name of the Public Service Department. By title and ordinance amending section 32-1 of the Aiken City Code regarding recycling services and changing the name of the Public Services Department. Is there a motion? Mr. Mayor? We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, at the October 10th, 2016 work session, city council heard a presentation from Public Works official, Tim Cokely, about a number of solid waste issues. One proposal from Public Works is a recommendation to move to every other week recycling, which will cut costs of fuel and wear on a portion of our solid waste fleet. In addition, service fees currently at $17 per month would not be increased for our residents. Since our solid waste service is an enterprise fund, revenues must be at least equal to expenditures. Public Works staff will promote this change through notification and city publications such as the Aiken Report Monthly Water Bill Newsletter, newspapers, social media, and the city website. The proposed ordinance also changes references to Public Services Department to reflect our recombining of Public Services and Engineering and Utilities into a Public Works Department. At the October 24th, 2016 meeting, a citizen noted that the proposed change in the recycling schedule would come at a time when many people will have their most recycling material. In response to the comment regarding the timing, staff is recommending that the recycling schedule for every other week become effective after the holidays on January 9th, 2017. This will give staff time to inform the citizens of the change and to avoid making the change during the holidays. City council approved this ordinance on first reading at the October 24th, 2016 meeting. For city council approval is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending section 32-1 of the Aiken City Code regarding recycling services and changing the name of Public Services Department. In addition, Mr. Mayor, we have our Public Works staff, Mr. Cokely and Ms. Jones, who are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mayor?
I think we said in work session, but just to make sure and be clear, with this going to every other week, there may be a need for some residents to have a larger recycle container. What's the provision? What do we plan to do for that, for those large, for those containers where it's needed?
We'll ask Mr. Cokely to come up.
For such a simple question, I hate to make you walk all the way up here.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Your question was for people that had overflow?
Well, yeah. Just as it's coming every two weeks, some people will need a larger bin, and you've got those little roll carts, I think you said.
Sure. We're going to make the larger bins available. The first thing we'll probably start with is public education.
About what can be recycled?
Exactly. We want to make sure you're making the best use of the size bin you have now. We periodically go around and check people's bins to see what the mix is or how full they are, and we see a lot of things like styrofoam in there that's not recyclable, or the dirty pizza box that's not recyclable. So, we're going to do a large amount of public education, and then, yeah, anybody that has overflow.
Well, I've learned more about what is and isn't recyclable just from this exercise. I think that education's a big piece.
Yeah, I think that's a huge part of this whole project. But, yeah, anybody that needed to move up to the larger...
But they would simply call your department, and we'd bring one and deliver to them?
Absolutely. Well, first, we'd probably work with them one-on-one and try, you know, try to stay where we're at, but, you know, we know there's some people with large families and that are recycling the maximum amount that they're doing, if they need a bigger cart. That's what we've been purchasing mostly.
I wonder, I mean, I know you've already figured this out, and so I don't want to belabor this, but I was just, it all of a sudden occurred to me if there was any kind of way that we could put an adhesive-backed sort of sticker on the inside of those lids, so when people go to put something in it, they can see what's recyclable and what isn't.
Sure, and we've done that on some of, you know, when the new ones go out. We've done that in the past, and we can continue to do that.
You probably know what works and what doesn't.
Well, and each person will get a sticker on their card already that's going to be either red or blue, letting them know which calendar to follow.
Right.
And maybe we can incorporate the tips into that sticker when we do it. But it'll be pretty obvious, you know, if you're a red sticker, so all your neighbors, everybody in your neighborhood will be...
Yeah, all go out on the same day.
So, once we go through a couple of weeks of people, you know, following the every other week schedule, I think it's going to be a non-issue.
And what happens if somebody wants an extra can? I mean, they already have two, one for their...
Yes. Like I said, the public education's going to be the first thing that comes, you know. We don't have many people now that need the extra can, and we've gone around and checked a lot of cans, and most of them are half-full. We've got several residents that only put theirs out every other week now, or once a month now. So, we're not projecting a whole lot of people needing a second can, but if they do, yeah, we're going to provide that. We want to, we want to collect all the recycling we can.
Beyond styrofoam and pizza boxes, what else should, is a major concern that should not be put in the blue barrel?
Yeah, you know, the list is unlimited, but the styrofoam's always my first one because it's so bulky, takes up so much space.
I know, like, those paper cartons, like you get orange juice and stuff in, those are no-no, too, aren't they?
Yeah, those are no-no. Little things add up, like...
Say that again?
You can't do the orange juice boxes.
Cartons, like old-fashioned milk cartons, before they came in the plastic, but there are the paper cartons now, you can get orange juice in them.
And O.E.N. cartons.
Well, because it's permeated paper, I mean, it's like waxed paper.
Yeah, any of that waxed...
Tim, there's been questions about donut boxes and recycle. That's something that would...
That's almost like a dirty pizza box.
Probably not be allowed.
Probably wouldn't be allowed, okay. That's important.
A milk carton's okay?
Yeah, the milk jugs.
Milk's are big.
But not the lid, but not the cap of it.
That's right.
What?
But there's things like crushing that milk...
Wait, we go back to milk here, because I'm hearing two different things. Can I throw the milk, milk thing in there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, milk crushing.
Crush it first.
Yeah, we can save a lot of space by crushing that stuff down. That would be like part of the education.
It sounds like a good Channel 4 program, maybe.
Absolutely. We're going to use every type of media we can to get it out, the word out, so...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was reminded that we actually, to make this go into effect January 9th, we need to amend this because as of right now, it would go in effect immediately.
That's correct.
So, we need to amend section 5. I guess I would look for a motion to amend this, section 5, to go into effect January 9th.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
I need that. Okay.
I made the motion, and so...
So, we have a motion to go to amend, to amend this ordinance that will not go into effect until January 9th, 2017. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay, thank you. So, now we'll go back to the ordinance as amended. I don't know if we would, is there any other motion on that, Gary?
No.
I think we just passed it.
Oh, we did.
As amended.
We have a motion and a second.
All right. All those in favor of the motion as amended? And that's unanimous. Thank you for that. And I appreciate staff keeping you straight on that, too. Thank you. Moving down to number four, this is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to set the city property tax millage rate due to reassessment. By title and ordinance to amend the millage rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016. Is there a motion on second reading?
So, move, Mr. Mayor.
I think we have a motion, second?
Second.
And a second? Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, the city council is aware of the Aiken County completed reassessment of all county real estate this past year, which is done about every five years. The latest reassessment, the last reassessment was done in 2011. Aiken County has provided us with the 2016 appraised and assessed values to use in our calculations for our city taxes for 2016. Our millage rate was rolled back in 2011 from 66 mils to the current millage rate of 62 mils. City council approved this ordinance on first reading at the October 24th, 2016 meeting. For city council consideration and second reading and the public hearing of an ordinance to set the tax millage rate for fiscal year 2016-17 after reassessment at 62 mils.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And that is the current rate. Great. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to new business on the agenda. Number one under new business, this is a first reading of an ordinance to accepting the fiscal year 2015-16 audited financial statements. By title, an ordinance accepting the fiscal year 2015-16 audited financial statements and authorizing variances to the fiscal year 2015-16 budget ordinance. Is there a motion?
I still move.
We have a motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, sir. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, our auditor, Malden &amp; Jenkins Certified Public Accountants LLC, has prepared the fiscal year 2015-16 financial audit required by state law and city code. Mr. Miller Edwards of Malden &amp; Jenkins reviewed the audit with council at the work session prior to this meeting. He reported that the city received an unqualified opinion with no material weaknesses and no instances of noncompliance material to the financial statements. For city council consideration is first reading of an ordinance to accept the fiscal year 2015-16 audited financial statements. Mr. Mayor, as you know, Mr. Miller Edwards is present this evening and would like to make a brief statement and then answer any questions that you may have.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Edwards, welcome.
Well, again, thank you all for having me here this evening. It's been a pleasure to be of service to you all for the second year. As noted in our work session, your fund balance of your general fund looks good. Not going to say it's too high, not going to say it's too low, but it's everything that you need it to be right now. Your financial statements look very good. As you mentioned, you've got a clean opinion from us, and as you also mentioned, I think it's very important to not make light of this. You all had no findings, no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies reported from us as part of the audit process, which means to us that you've got a good thing going here, and you've got a very proactive management team taking things personally and doing things right and doing the right things. Again, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Appreciate you being here tonight. Any questions? Okay. And, of course, we had an opportunity to talk to you in the work session earlier, too, so...
Right.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the audience? Okay. Comments from council?
I would just like to reiterate again something we've said in the past years, but how terrific that news really is and what a credit it is to Mr. Clem and his staff, as well as particularly Ms. Abney and her staff. I mean, it's a maze of numbers and categories, and so we've had clean audit after clean audit after clean audit, and good reports after good reports, since at least I've been on council. I just think it's a credit to Ms. Abney and Mr. Clem and the city managers before them. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. I'll echo those comments to city manager Clem and our finance director, Kim Abney. Thank you all so much for the job you do for us. I think this audit proves that we have a great staff doing a great job for us, and I think everyone on council appreciates the job you're doing for us. We appreciate it. No more comments? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And, Mr. Edwards, thank you for being with us tonight.
(Inaudible).
Stay the night in Aiken, spend some money.
Moving down to new business is number two. This is approval of a grant, of a grant award from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety for domestic violence investigator. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Have a motion and a second? Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, our Department of Public Safety has applied for grant funding through the State of South Carolina Justice Assistance Grant Program for a dedicated domestic violence investigator. We just learned that we have been awarded the grant funding, which is a 90%, 10% match grant. The grant is renewable for up to three years. Through our Safe Communities Initiative, we have identified that many of our offenders have domestic violence issues in their families. It is felt that having a dedicated investigator to work with the offenders and by referring them to support agencies would help reduce occurrences of domestic violence. The Comby Center, to assist abused persons, and the Aiken County Solicitors Office have been supporting this endeavor. The investigator position would be dedicated to domestic violence incidents and initiatives. The investigator would also provide training to other officers to help them handle domestic situations. The funds to be received for this grant would be $88,841 for the period of October 1st, 2016, to June 30, 2017, with a city match of $9,871. Grant funds include salary and benefits for the position, a vehicle, and training for the position. Since the Public Safety Department has had open positions since the start of the fiscal year, it is anticipated that we will be able to meet the city match with the currently budgeted salary amount. For city council consideration is approval of this grant for a domestic violence investigator for $88,841 with a 10% match of $9,871 from the city. And, Mr. Mayor, our chief is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Appreciate it. All right. Any comments from the audience? Any comments or questions from council?
Yeah, I have a question.
Chief, if you would mind.
Well, the chief is coming up. My main concern on this is safety. I think we've all read recently of incidents in other states resulting in fatalities of police officers, and I think the chief will bear out the fact that nobody likes to respond to a domestic violence. I'd like to know, what is this investigator going to do? Is this investigator going to be responding to incidents, hopefully not alone? Can you give us a sense, and who will be, have you identified who's going to do this?
No, sir. We're waiting for your approval before we fill this position. Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing that point to light, and they will not be the first responder to the domestic scene unless it's one of those large scenes that needs additional assistance from investigations already, but they would be the primary person for follow-up to these domestics, and we would not, any follow-up could be done over the phone, in person, at the detention center, at the Comby Center, wherever it may need to be, but we wouldn't put them in a situation where they felt unsafe as a follow-up.
So, they would be required to go out in the middle of the night for, to investigate the incident?
Well, if we had a large enough scene, sure, they would need to go to that, but on a typical...
Okay. They'd be on call, not an eight-to-five position, or...
Yes. That's what we envision, yes, ma'am. They would have to go out on those large scenes, but it wouldn't be on every domestic call that they went on.
How prevalent are, how many domestic violence issues are you dealing with at the present time?
Thank you for bringing that up.
I didn't set that up.
We studied fiscal years 13, 14, and 15 in correlation with our Safe Communities Initiative, those violent offenders that have been identified, and we saw a large drop in our domestic violence calls from year 2013 to 2014 because, as we studied, a significant amount of those identified offenders had domestic violence cases as well. So, we think that the Violent Offender Program had a ripple effect to the domestic violence. However, since then, we're still averaging about 530 calls a year of domestic violence and arresting around 100 people, or incarcerating 100 people during that time. So, what we envision is for this person assigned to the investigator would do follow-up with those offenders at the detention center. You know, we get in this job of law enforcement to actually be proactive and preventive of those cases. So many times, we go to a domestic case and it's, you know, there's no physical contact, but somebody may have been fearful, and a primary aggressor wasn't determined, and so there wasn't an arrest made. We would actually follow up with those peoples, people to offer them assistance through the Comby Center and other places to actually prevent this from escalating to a domestic situation.
So, they'd be working with the offenders, not the offenders?
Both. They would work with both. They would. And our victim's advocate would be heavily involved in this process as well.
Who would this person report to within your department?
It would fall under the investigative division.
Victim service?
Yes, sir.
Chief, South Carolina, we don't wear this with any distinction of pride, I know, given that we're the worst in the nation with domestic violence. Where, in terms of the municipalities, there's over 270 some municipalities, but 46 counties. Where, in terms of the municipalities, there's over 270 some municipalities, but 46 counties, where do we rank in terms of Aiken County?
Well, I can speak closer to probably Aiken City.
Okay.
Although, we have seen that significant decrease in the number of calls, and this last year legislation changed the law to determine how we can, or who we can arrest for domestic violence, or to give clearer guidance to it. We have ranked very high in the homicide of domestic violence in South Carolina. I think we were lower to fifth in the nation this year. But we look back over at some of the homicides that we've had over the years, and there was a connection of domestic issues in about half of them. So, to give you an exact number, I don't have that in front of me, but, you know, we've all read the newspapers over the last several years and know that some of the homicides have been connected to domestics.
Okay, so, you're excited about having a person identified for this specific position?
Absolutely, because I believe we can make an effort in the actual prevention side in the domestic realm.
Okay. What should their background be and what type of education requirements?
Well, this would be a certified police officer's position, and, of course, we would want them to have some experience working domestic calls on, you know, as a patrol officer, and so it would also help with having some investigative skills, I would think.
One question, Chief. Does this tie in with the ad lib item program where people go out and try to represent, like minors and domestic problem areas?
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
Guardian at, guardian at.
Guardian at, okay. We have worked with the guardians in the past. This specific situation...
Does this position interact with that?
We do on occasion when an issue has arisen as a domestic, but not so much in the preventive stage, and that's what we're hoping to look at and expand.
When you make a final selection, I personally would like to know who you select, not for any other reason, just to know.
Absolutely.
Chief, let me say, first of all, I appreciate the department being proactive against domestic violence, and as Ms. Price said earlier, we actually rank number one against domestic violence against women, and that's not something we, as a state, and that's not something that we wear with pride, but I'm glad as a city we're being proactive to make changes in that area. I would like to ask, who wrote the grant for this?
Thank you for asking that, too. Actually, he's here tonight. Lieutenant Ben Harm is in the back of the room, and he is...
Thank you, Lieutenant. For bringing this forward to us. Any other questions of the chief? Reggie, I see you leaning forward.
Is it automatic renewed for three years, or does it have to come back tonight? Are we just saying it's an automatic? It's mentioned here specifically it's renewable for three years in both places, in the cover letter, then in the award.
I think that's up to council, and how you would like to amend that in the motion.
Do we need to amend the motion to do that? Or is it automatic? The way it's, the way it's written, it says it's renewable, but in the other part, it's the exact words, it's renewable for up to three years, including this year.
And it would be for a total of three years?
That's what I, the way I read, I just wanted to be sure that the city attorney read it that way, and I think it should be for the three years, is what I'm saying. If it's not that way, it's on page 61, it says the grant is renewed for up to three years, including this year.
I was looking for the specific language in the grant.
Would you expect the decision to be filled by the end of the issue?
Have it filled, yes.
I'm not immediately finding the language in the grant document itself, but I think if council voted to approve for whatever period the grant is available to the city, I think that would be appropriate. I don't think that leaves you overly open-ended, and when chief comes back to you with the budget next year, he's going to have to include that $9,000 in there for your approval, so...
So, okay, so what we had is good.
You'll continue to get that update.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Mary.
All right. Thank you, chief. We appreciate it. All those in favor? Raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you.
As the chief identified Officer Harm for the grant, I personally want to say thank you as well. There are so many needs as we move along that this community has, and whenever we have an opportunity with staffers, I mean, when we have those grants, going after those grants, it helps with the initiatives that we have, given the needs of this community or any community. Jessica, I know, just brought us $200,000 for a grant for the area on the west side of town, so, with the senior youth center, so, those are all helpful to all of us.
Price? All right, moving down to petitions and requests on our agenda. Number one, this is a resolution accepting deed of dedication for Dogwood Chase subdivision Streets and Utilities, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a deed of dedication of water, stormwater, and sewer utilities, streets and utility easements from Lacy and Associates, LLC. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, Lacy and Associates, LLC, owner of the Dogwood Chase subdivision, has requested that the city accept a deed of dedication for the roadways, water, stormwater, drainage, and sanitary sewer utilities and associated utility easements. This subdivision is located off Banks Mill Road along Wild Haven Drive. The engineering staff has inspected the existing infrastructure and has determined that it meets city requirements. The subdivision was inspected in accordance with the convention that was established prior to the 2008 change to the engineer of record certification methodology. Staff is recommending that the deed of dedication be accepted by the city for the Dogwood Chase subdivision. The council meeting on October 24, 2016, council continued acceptance of the deed of dedication for the Dogwood Chase subdivision in response to a request from Councilor Ebner, a request for the public services staff to inspect the landscaping to ensure that proper roadway clearance requirements were being met. Staff has met with the developer and has agreed to clear the frontage with the exception of some trees that will need to remain. Staff will inspect the work prior to the council meeting on November 14 to be sure that the work was completed in a satisfactory manner. For council consideration, is a resolution to accept the deed of dedication for Dogwood Chase subdivision, accepting the roadways, water, stormwater, drainage, and sanitary sewer utilities and associated utility easements.
Any comments from the audience? Comments from the council? All those in favor? Raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Number two, under petitions and requests, this is approval of mutual aid agreement with Aiken County Sheriff's Department for assistance and support when needed. Is there a motion?
Move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Second. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, South Carolina state law allows local law enforcement agencies to enter into mutual aid agreements to provide necessary support for public safety functions. Currently, we have agreements with surrounding local law enforcement agencies because we recognize the importance of mutual aid in times of crises or need. The Aiken Department of Public Safety has been approached by the Aiken County Sheriff's Department to renew our mutual aid agreement with them. A copy of the proposed agreement is attached in the agenda. This item was continued from the October 10, 2016 meeting. Public Safety Director Beranko has provided a memo to answer some questions which were raised concerning the assistance provided by the Public Safety Department to the Sheriff's Department. He has also included in his memo the benefits and the assistance provided to the city of Aiken by the Sheriff's Department. For council approval is renewal of a mutual aid agreement for the Aiken County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the audience? Okay, comments or questions from council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I originally expressed some concerns with this as it interfaced with our annexation program. I had been hearing from people that did not feel they needed to annex because they were getting public safety services already, and so the chief and I had a discussion on that, and I've been reassured that that's not the case. There are situations where we will work with the county, just as many where the county will work with us, so I'm satisfied with the agreement and recommend that we approve it.
Thank you, Councilman Duar. Appreciate that and your due diligence.
And, Mr. Mayor, I meant to mention just a quick note of thanks to our sheriff and to the county. They do provide us services. They work hand-in-hand with our public safety department, so I just wanted to publicly thank the sheriff and the men and women of his department for working so closely with us.
Thank you, Mr. Clem. I think we'll all join you in that. Appreciate the support. Any other comments from the council? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to information, anything under issues and updates?
Yeah, I have a question. There's an item on park recreation and tourism fees. I'm not sure I understand it. Jessica's still here. We were talking, I guess, parks, recreation, tourism wanted to increase some fees, and the Recreation Commission voted no, which is good, but I'm confused about the increase in scholarships being utilized and various problems parks, recreation, and tourism is facing. Can you, I mean, we just passed our budget a few months ago. Do you really need to increase the scholarship, and what is this all about?
The number of participants requesting scholarship continues to increase over the years, and we don't turn anyone away, and so we are continually having to compensate for in our budget because it always exceeds the requested amount. We feel like having a buy-in, a small nominal buy-in by the participant, will help to offset that funding cost. In addition, we see, unfortunately, a lot of people participate and utilize that funds and then not actually follow through with the program, so we put aside funding for them to participate, and then they don't show up. They drop out. So, having a nominal fee that they do still pay out of pocket would help to have them participate, which is our ultimate goal.
But you would still provide a scholarship for someone who can't, who doesn't have the money?
Correct. We would still offer the $100 in free funding for that youth activity. We are asking for some upfront buy-in on that.
All right. Thank you. Good clarification. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jessica, appreciate it. Any other comments under issues and updates on your information?
Just make a comment that despite my disappointment that Clemson is no longer undefeated, that there is still a school in South Carolina that's undefeated, and in, out of respect and admiration for our city attorney, who's a graduate of Citadel.
The Bulldogs.
Regular season Southern Conference champions. I'm wearing my Citadel tie.
Ten and O?
Ten and O. They've got some powder blue school from North Carolina this weekend on a game that really doesn't matter, but congratulations Citadel.
Well, I think we need to recognize Aiken High School girls volleyball team is the state champions as well, so...
Matter of fact, I was going to request that we invite them to the next council meeting, along with Coach Melinda Young, as well as Felicia Tucker, who was just giving the Windis Heisman Award.
That's a great idea.
Probably include the swim team also from Aiken High School because they won the state championship as well last...
Oh, did they, really?
Well, let's just invite the whole school.
They're making us proud, aren't they?
Maybe we need to have council meeting at Aiken High School.
Well, you know, South Aiken football team is doing pretty good right now, too, so...
Well, they are, and I was going to bring that up.
Maybe some neutral ground.
I was going to bring that up.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
I second.
All those in favor, please stand up. Thank you, we're adjourned.
Reggie?